Welcome to our work session today and I guess Jim, you're during the deal.
I'm Matt. My name is Jim Dunlawyer. I'm the Executive Director of Leaven County Commissioner on Drug and Alcohol Abuse. I want to thank the commissioners for having me today for this workshop. This is my first workshop, so I don't exactly know how it goes. I know how commissioner's meetings go, but if I need to be directed in any way, please do so.
No, this is just a chance for informal presentations.
I like informal.
We take no action or anything like that.
I like informal.
Best case scenario, I think.
Okay. With me today is Cherie and Andrew. They're with GIS and they are going to be part of my presentation today. I'd like to start off by talking about heroin death numbers in Leaven County. I provided everyone here today with an agenda. Let's just go down my agenda. There's your agenda there?
Is that what this is?
Yes, that's my agenda. So I'm starting at the top, providing you guys with an update on the heroin epidemic in Leaven County. As you recall, in 2014, there was a, there was an increase in heroin death overdoses. There was a total of 18. And in 2014, what we did to help combat that number and help bring that number down was we established a task force in Leaven County. And the first two years after the task force was established, our numbers went down. You know, if you look on the handout that I provided you, it went from 18 to 17 to 16. Well, in 2017, the number jumped to 27. So, you know, we had a little decrease in a couple of years and then, you know, 2017 went up substantially. The past year, 2018, as we currently sit here, we had 27 again. Now, I suspect that that number will be higher because Dr. Yocum and myself will come before the commissioners in February sometime and present the coroner's report. Part of that is the heroin deaths that occurred. So I'm expecting between now and that date that some will come in. The reason they come in is because he waits for tox- uh, toxicology reports and so forth. So it appears that we're going to increase again this year. So our task force is still up and running. We still meet on a regular basis. We meet quarterly as a, as a big group and then we have pillars that meet more frequently. But part of our task force, Cherie and Andrew, the way they got involved with our task force was they contacted me and we talked about how they could possibly use mapping to help us out, help the task force out, as well as help my office out. So they are here today to do a presentation for you, to show you what we come, what we came up with. The idea behind the mapping is to provide the consumer an easy way to access resources, look up resources. Right now, what we do in our offices, if someone comes by our office, or I go to speak somewhere, or I have some kind of job fair, or any kind of event that I'm going to be in the public, I'll hand out paper pamphlets. Well, what we're going to try to do is eliminate those paper pamphlets and we're going to try to attach this mapping system to websites. Maybe the county website, the task force is working on their own website, where people can, even on the phones, I'm told, that they can make this happen on the phone. Here, you have your phone and you need to find a detox facility, you need to find an inpatient drug and alcohol facility. You can go on your phone and access this information. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Cherie and Andrew and they can go through some of what the site can, what it's capable of.
So just to sort of start, we, we helped with the hazard mitigation plan and hazard mitigation update. So as part of that, heroin overdoses were rated as a high hazard in the latest plan. Andrew and I started to talk about, you know, ways that, you know, how does working towards that hazard look? Or what could we do to kind of help mitigate that hazard? We wanted to get in touch with the coroner, with Jim. So it's sort of how that all came about. They invited us to sit in on the heroin task force. And then listening to them, we decided to come up with another web mapping application. And to be honest, when we, Drew and I kind of sat down, we had ideas before we sat on the task force of what we thought would be beneficial. After sitting there and listening to those folks, we had to totally change our mindset and the course of what we thought and kind of bring, we thought something more statistical, you know, map showing where, you know, we see problem areas. But that, that wasn't at all what this task force taught us about where the needs lay. So we kind of came back and revamped our whole mindset and way of thinking and sort of came up with a web mapping application to service folks that are looking for help, recovery, a place to go. So Drew, I might give it to you now.
So when you first log on to the map here.
Oh, and again, this is, this goes right along the line with everything else we've done, right? So it's going to work and look the same way as any other web mapping application we've done. Again, an application that is not available like for download from the App Store or anything, but with a link, you get to this. And when you first come to this, there is a disclaimer that you click on. Maybe we should show that real quick. And it tells you, like, if you're having an emergency right now, call 911. You know, don't, don't rely on this web mapping application. You're going to want to call 911. You have to agree to it in order to move forward. But again, it's got that look and the feel that any of the other web mapping applications we have showed you in the past, it has that same thing. So folks will be a little familiar just coming in. Sorry.
So when you first log on, you see an overview of the county and you'll notice, you know, a couple of different symbols are available right away. And over here, we have a complete list of resources that are available to view on the map. So at first glance, we see that treatment services and drug takeback locations are on the map. So if you were to click on any one of these, so if you click on a treatment service here, you can see the information available for that service. And if you need more information, the link is right there and I'll take you right to that through all the website. Same thing for drug takeback locations. This is where anyone can take back prescription drugs or unwanted medication. And they can drop that off for free, no questions asked. That's the information about when that's open. Again, more information if you need that on the drug takeback website. So we have more resources over here. A little more specific is the medication assisted treatment services. So we have methadone, buprenorphine, and dolutrol treatment services. Also have the hospitals in Leaven County.
Remove some of the, so it's not, after a while, it gets cluttered and you have to all check.
Yeah, so, right, yeah. So speaking of which, you can turn these on or off just by checking or unchecking the boxes. And I think the last thing here is pharmacies carrying Narcan. So Narcan is the brand name for naloxone, which is the drug used to block the effects of opioid overdose in the brain. So this is available at most pharmacies and Pennsylvania has a standing order right now, which means anyone can get Narcan or naloxone at a pharmacy without a prescription. So like the rest, we have the relevant information, then website link that they can find more information if need be.
Doesn't have anything to do with this, but Jim, what, what is the cost if they go into a pharmacy online now? If someone off the street.
Drew, you researched this.
I think that's going to be more based on insurance, you know, what your insurance will cover. And I think the cost will also depend on just where you go. So calling around, I got some varying information. So it seems just based on insurance and where you get it, it's going to differ. So it's not going to be.
Is there a range?
Yeah.
I've heard anywhere from $40 to, you know, $170.
I can tell you when we purchased Narcan kits in our office, they were $80 a kit.
Wasn't it just not long ago that was like $500, $600?
And the other factor too is, you know, what, are you going to get the nasal spray? Are you going to get the injectable? What, what kind of Narcan are you going to get? What's the application of it? So it varies in prices, but I heard as low as 40 and I heard as much like you said, in the hundreds. But the last time we purchased it in our office, it was $80 a kit and that gave you two applications. So that would break it down to 40 per one application. But keep in mind, some people sometimes need one, but most times need more than one.
So that's the resources that we have available for this map. And down here, you can see we also have EMS stations, fire stations, and police stations, if anyone is interested in that information as well. If, you know, you're looking at this map and kind of see, okay, there's a lot of pharmacies, you know, I don't, I don't want to click on all of them. You can go over here, you'll get a dropdown list, so you can just view all the pharmacies here. Now, if that's a little more helpful, or treatment services as well. You get a list right there.
And if you clicked on any one of those, it would jump to it on the map. So if I decide the Leaven Recovery Center is for me, it would jump right to that.
So over here, we have a little tool, search near me.
And we thought about this, like, if I'm a loved one of someone that needs help, or maybe even someone themselves that needs help, and maybe, I don't know, a car, maybe I need to figure out where I can walk to, or what's close to me, or I'm at a bad point right now. I need, I need something real close, real fast. This near me gets me resources that are close enough to me that I could get to, put it to a mile, Drew. So you can use the slider and you can go down to a mile or.
Yeah, up to 15, but, so this kind of shows you treatments, you know, resources in your immediate area. So this, even if something's not on the map, it'll come up here on the side. This is everything within a mile of that overdose right here. So you can see there's nine treatment services within a mile. That gives you that list. See, there's four pharmacies carrying Narcan in that area and two drug takeback locations. So as well as searching, you can just, you know, place a pin as well. You just say, go ahead, point out anything in the northern side of the city and I'll give you that area. Also have additional information over here. So relevant to the map here, we have outlines and support groups, like 24 hour lines. So you can see, kind of gives you a little blurb and you click on the link here and it kind of takes you to that website. So you have 211 here, if you like, and that takes you to more information there. Yeah, also gives you the number right there below, if you're looking for something a little quicker. We have more, more lines here. There's a little more information about naloxone and what exactly that is. National Prescription Drug Takeback Day occurred last October. And so that's really just the DEA's way of really getting people out to get rid of their unwanted medication. And so you can see some more information relevant to that.
And that, that can be updated if we have any kind of events. The next National Drug Takeback Day, whatever might be relevant, we can add that information there.
And then just below, a little bit more information on takeback locations and what you can and cannot dispose of.
And we could list other events that the task force is putting on as far as National Recovery Month. We have an event in September, you could put that on the side as well.
Red Ribbon Week.
Red Ribbon Week. Anything related to things that we're doing in the community, for the community, we can post on this website. So this website is pretty much a revolving, always changing website. We will continue to add things that we feel are important for people to know and be able to access. And the way we set it up, the task force can come up with the ideas and they can give me the ideas. And then after they give me the ideas, we would talk about what we put on and what have you. But I don't want anybody from the task force just shooting you guys stuff to put on the map. I want to be responsible for what goes on that map because that represents my office and county commissioners and so forth. So I want to make sure we're really, it's not a, it's not a, you can't communicate back and forth with anybody in the public. It's just a, you know, you can click on there to get information. And no one has to really man it unless we make changes.
I have the phone numbers active so that if you're on your mobile device, that you can just click on it and dial it.
I don't believe so, at least, you know, that's not anything that we can control on this site.
But they can click right, if you go right to their name. Yeah, they're, any of these, any of those take you right to their website?
And then the phone.
And then from there, you pick, if you wanted to click directly to get, to go that way with the number.
Time to set the essence, and that's why I'm wondering, it would be, it would be a huge service to have the direct phone. I mean, yes, they can see it, but then if they have to switch back to their dialing.
Right.
You'll forget a number or get too reversed or something.
Just a couple more things, like the rest, whereas, you know, we have the ability to print. So if you'd like to take an image of this map mobile, you know, you can print to a PDF, take that with you. A little information about the task force here. That kind of gives you, gives the public more information if they're not familiar with what the task force does and, you know, what the mission, what the term accomplishes. And once the task force website goes live, we'll have that available here as well. And then lastly, just if anyone's new to, you know, this sort of application, they can come to this tab and it kind of gives you a little more information about how to use this map, what's available to them. So that way, if anyone's lost or, you know, has a question, they can refer to this first before, excuse me, before, you know, calling us or what have you.
Again, we wanted to make it simple, easy, intuitive, but yet give somebody all the information and help that they may need sitting at home, if, you know, for some more private experience maybe, sitting from your computer, sitting on your phone. Just another way to maybe encourage people to seek help if they need it.
My other question is, I don't remember, does that sidebar come up automatically or do you have to click on something to get that?
This sidebar?
Yeah.
This comes up automatically.
Okay. Because that's where all the information is hidden, Drew.
Correct. Yep, that comes up right away. And let's see, you just have a little note at the beginning, right when you come in. So if you're new to this, you know, for assistance, just refer to the help tab. So that way, if someone's unfamiliar with this, right away, they can just go up here and get all the information they need about this application.
Under the question mark.
Correct. Yep.
Okay.
But yeah, this does come up automatically, you start out here, so, yeah, there's availability right away.
Looks like there's a high concentration, A, in the city and B, along Route 422.
You can see down there, yeah, the city is definitely going to have more available.
Jim, does that correspond with where the deaths are happening?
Not necessarily.
Not?
No. They're happening all over the county. They have all zip codes, 17042, 17046, Myersstown, Jonestown, Palmyra, Panville. I mean, we've had one from just about every area of the town.
Is the, the demographics still basically like in what, I mean, it's people in their 30s normally?
It's 29 to 34. We have more males than females. The number one mixed substances, but primarily, there's always an opiate involved with it as, you know, the mix, whatever they take.
Is there a primarily Caucasian as well?
Caucasian, about 35 years is the average.
It's.
We're losing this battle, huh?
Yeah, the numbers don't.
I mean, and I say we, I'm talking, you know, nationwide.
Yeah, again, I mean, this isn't, doesn't make me feel better. We have 27 people, possibly have more than that in our county. Surrounding counties have quite a bit more, you know, they have quite a bit more people too. So, but relatively speaking, it doesn't seem like, I mean, if the numbers don't go down, that's what everybody looks at, the numbers. Everybody looks at the numbers, says, oh, it stayed the same or went, went higher, you know, what you're doing is not working. I believe, you know, Narcan's on this map for a big reason is I think that's, our numbers where the DMT work. Between Narcan and Narcan, a lot of people, I think I talked to Brian Smith, I think that his numbers for 2018, but it'd be interesting how many people the DMT saved, how many people got saved at the hospital. I think 27, if you, you know, 27 deaths would look very well because there'd be a lot more.
Have you made any comparison to other fifth-class counties, Jim?
I have not. That's something that might be.
Although, although the, you know, the populations are similar, they, a lot of would be more rural probably than even we are.
So the population would be the same amount of people, but like you said, the, the areas, their makeup of their county. I mean, we have a big contingency of city people.
I have to say to Cherie and Andrew, you, you continue to amaze me at the flexibility and the things that you're able to come up with. So certainly appreciate that and I know, Jim, you are sure appreciative of it as well.
And when they first, I'll be honest with you, when they first came to the task force meeting, I'm thinking, well, how is mapping going to help? But absolutely, when you sit down and think about how you can, you know, I'm a visual person, this would help me out very well. You can give me a pamphlet and I'm going to go to the pamphlet and think, I'd much rather the people be able to access this. And again, do you have a phone, do you have a computer? Do you have access to this site? Can you get to this? There would be some people that won't be able to do that.
Of the age group you're talking about? It does have.
Pretty much they.
To brothers or sisters.
I, I really like the anonymity of it, that I can just be at home, maybe, I don't even want to admit to anybody what's going on and I can be looking for help real, you know, easily as, as a first step, you know, maybe that, that's a big deal. That I can do it privately and not, you know, not feel intimidated by even picking up a phone, you know, to make a phone call.
And all the main numbers are on there, the 211, the 911.
And this is reliable local information?
Yes.
That was created by our own human services, because I can tell the list.
Yes, but we, we took feedback from the task force. They get a lot of input into what they've, you know, how they felt things should be ordered, what numbers should be included. And we took materials they developed and, you know, woven all into this.
And you took my pamphlet.
Yeah.
A lot of information from the pamphlets up there.
I have a couple of comments right there. This one goes back to Commissioner Phillips's, just her notice or observation that it's along 422. I think that, that probably has more to do with the, because this is, this is the same as our GIS maps. The concentration or the, the, the drill down is more along 422 because that's where the population mostly is.
Right, it's our urban area.
It's where the retail and commercial locations are, which would be the pharmacies and the treatment centers and the drop offs. So I think that has more to do with just really population center and so on. The second comment is, have you, if you haven't already done this, and maybe you have, you know, Crisis Intervention at 211 might want to utilize this. So I don't know if you've pushed it out to them and said, here it is, here's the link, just go ahead and, you know. But it might, it might be a very quick tool for them.
To be honest with you, we haven't pushed this out to anyone.
Okay.
This is the first look.
Okay, okay.
Because, I mean, I, I would just like to have commissioner approval to attach this to the county website.
So right, so this is a link that, right, we'll put on the county's website and then anyone else who wants to pick up this link can pick it up and put it wherever they want to put it. Which crisis can put it on there, any of those lists can put it, anyone on the list can put it on their page. We, we talked about having a QR code that maybe would go on a pamphlet in the future that would jump you right to the website. So we, you know, really, once we roll this out, it can go nearly, nearly anywhere.
Jim, that might be something to just, as soon as it goes live, you know, let those, those crisis agencies know.
We have those folks, Crisis Intervention, Brenda Startoni's on our task force.
Okay.
She heads up the Harm reduction committee. So she's part of it.
Okay.
She's aware of this.
Okay.
So it would be a very easy connection for us to let them know it's available.
And then lastly.
Get it out to them.
Lastly, Drew, kudos to you for doing your research and like getting up to date on, you know, what, what treatment programs and locations are out there. It sounds like you, you had a game up a little bit, but you did.
Yeah, I mean, I definitely had to do some research and, you know, combined with being on the task force and everything, just being able to combine everything into one source, you know, definitely be helpful.
Well, my question obviously is the one that everybody's going to ask, when is it going to go live that they can utilize it?
I personally would want the approval or the support of the commissioners before I send anything out.
We could vote on that? And then if we did, when could it go live?
We could do it today. Typically, basically, just as long as he has knowledge.
As soon as MIS can put the, ITS can put the link on the, a link up. That's really, you know, as quickly as, as they can put the link up. They've been very quick. You could. Now, the, the task force discussed different options, rolling it, having a splash, rolling it out.
They did.
I think there's, what's that coming up?
There's a prevention week coming up.
And they thought maybe having it roll out in conjunction with that as a thought.
Or get it out there and just make, make a, highlight it.
Yeah, that's possible.
Because if we go live, we have to, we go live, no one knows about it. Like, we have to.
They do now.
Well, okay, but in the bigger sense.
Quite a few people watching.
Well, the people that need to know about this going live and need to know to access this pride aren't watching, are watching us. So we need to, that's why we said like a community event where prevention is prevention week and we have people, we do put on an event and get this out to the people that would access this for services.
I think it'd be simply, I mean, you indicate your support, there's no objection to this.
I have no objection to it.
And that's all I wanted them to say.
Task force, so he was aware of it as well.
When he's aware of it, I mean, we're here today presenting because he thought, you know, we should be presenting this stuff to the commissioners and make them aware of all this. And I was just looking for a blessing, I guess, to say, okay, you can go live with this and.
If I can put the request in to Danielle, then we can get it.
And we can still do that event.
Yeah, sure.
You know.
We can have it up there, people will stumble on it and then when the event comes out, certainly, it'll get a lot more.
This is a soft rollout to how the real thing later on.
Yeah, absolutely.
Jim, I'm going to ask another question that just proves that I really don't know much. But I'm curious, how many folks come forward and say, you know, I have a problem, I need help? As opposed to it's family or friend generated to get help?
To be honest with you, the number one referral source we have is legal, so they don't come forward on their own.
Right.
Pre-will. We, we saw 535 unique people last year, different people who received close to 1,200 services through our office. So we have a lot of repeat business, same people, kind of. So, but besides legal, then it is family. We always get people calling on behalf of so-and-so.
So it might also be worth sending the link to the bar association and they could disseminate it to all their members.
Yeah, we could send it, as soon as we're up and going, we can send it wherever we need to.
But I didn't know if they were on your list to send the link to.
I don't know if we have the list yet.
When you say legal, you mean the legal, like the legal.
I call probation parole.
Criminal justice.
Oh, I thought you meant attorneys.
The legal, the criminal justice, probation parole is 43% of our business. Out of those 535 people, 265 are probation parolees. So that's our biggest referral source.
So the sad thing is that the users don't, do not recognize it's a problem, right?
It's usually the loved ones. Like I said, I have a grandson or I have a son, I have, I have a loved one, he needs help, where can I get him help? Those are the kind of people that will access this more so than the person themselves. Because, I mean, we get phone calls all the time in our office and it's, we'll always say, if so-and-so wants help, they need to call us themselves. We can't talk, like, kind of HIPAA and everything else, we can't talk to you about someone else. So until your loved one calls us directly and we talk to them, there's not much we can do for them. So until your loved one calls us directly and we talk to them, there's not much we can do for them. And it gets frustrated, they get frustrated, but we're like, we can't solve his problem for you.
Okay, well, as the saying goes, every little bit helps, right?
Absolutely.
So more people that have access and are aware of the, you know, hopefully the the better chance we have of saving lives.
That's your part of it?
That's still part of it. I'm sure they don't want to stay for the rest of my part, but I want to thank them both because like Jamie said, that they they did a really, really good job.
Well, thank you all.
Really appreciate it.
Good job and a Jim Scott board to go with.
I I think that you are on the cutting edge and you're showing, you're carving a path, leading a path for a lot of other counties. So that's commendable because I don't know that they have the vision and the initiative that you guys have taken, so thank you for putting us on the map.
Once this is up and running, Jim, you might want to share with other counties, uh, I don't know whether, yeah, whether.
Well, we have, we have a statewide PACTA, PACTA is statewide S C A directors. And PACTA always does a little, they always do a thing about how you're addressing the heroin epidemic. So we can share, I can share that at a PACTA meeting and then PACTA sends out a newsletter that says what Lemon County's doing or what other county's doing. So it's it's basically so we can share each other's, instead of recreating the wheel, we can, we can steal from each other.
And Lemon's gonna be the county spotlight on the county G I S pros website, uh, probably beginning of February. And so we want to share all the apps and stuff we've been doing, so.
I'm thinking, Commissioner Litz, you're more involved than I am, but that this could be something, you know, the way you folks are utilizing the the G I S. It might be something that we could share at C C A that they could do.
Absolutely, we can get you in for a workshop at C C A, not just, you know, the department, not the department meeting, but for the, it would be great if we could get you like in an opening or closing session. Because the breakout sessions, well, if you hit thirty counties, that's great, but if you're in the general session, you could hit one or two, like, you're not counties, but people representing counties. You can hit one or two hundred people, like the chief clerks and the commissioners and whatever.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pick this up a little.
Okay. Okay, moving right along, I just want to update both of you and Jamie as well, some of the things that our office is doing. This is one thing that is, in my opinion, forward thinking, proactive. And everything I've done since I got in the position I'm in, I want to say I've been forward thinking, not thinking about today, think about maybe two, three, four years from now, how it looks. So what we're trying to do in in our office is we're trying to bring innovative programming to the office that doesn't come from Commissioner funding, the general fund. Most of the projects we're doing are either grant proposals or are reinvestment projects. So I want to briefly talk about just some of the things so you guys are aware. The first, I'm talking about C A V H C reinvestment projects, you're fully aware I'm on the C A V H C board. Every year, it seems like we have money left over to do reinvestment projects. Since being in my position since two thousand thirteen, the county of Lebanon has participated in four of those projects. The first one I want to talk about is mobile assessment, mobile assessment then exists in Lebanon County. We were able to do a reinvestment project with C A V H C. And basically what mobile assessment is, is we are now going to the hospitals, and this ties into the task force, this ties into dealing with opiate use disorder clients. We are now going into the hospital and meeting people in the emergency room that just experienced an overdose. And we're trying to get those people into treatment immediately, okay? So basically, someone overdoses, ends up in the E R, Crisis Intervention, who we contract with, has to go in and meet with that person. If that person says, yes, I want treatment, then this mobile assessment piece comes into play. So this is part of our warm handoff for opiate use disorder folks. Basically, this program is run by P C S, that's who contracts, that's who we contract out with the service. P C S has one full time and one part time person doing this project at the current time. This project started in May of two thousand eighteen and to date, December of two thousand eighteen, they've been called in the emergency room thirty one times. Now, thirty one times, people have agreed to talk to somebody about getting help. Out of those thirty one assessments in the emergency room, they've gone half those people to treatment, either detox or rehab. So sixteen out of those thirty one people have gone to get treatment. Before, the way it worked is people would come to the emergency room, they'd overdose, they'd come to, the hospital would want to discharge them right away. Crisis would come up and give them our information to our office and say, hey, tomorrow when you, you know, tomorrow when you go home tonight, give drug and alcohol call if you want treatment or help. Well, no one ever called us. So that didn't seem to be working, we had pamphlets, we had cards, we had all kinds of information over there for these people. But again, some took it, some didn't take it, but very few followed up with this the next day or so. So the idea of this whole thing is to catch them while they're there, that's not a good word. They're there, they're physically coming out of their overdose, it might be a time where you can, crisis comes in, maybe convince, persuade, whatever you want to call it, that this person would elect to get treatment. So so far, the numbers, again, from May till November, it's only eight months, but again, we have a staff member and a half a staff member and we've seen over thirty people. And the nice part of this is they're P C S employees and they are, the only thing that the reinvestment paid for these folks is the startup. Once the startup's over, P C S maintains and sustains this themselves. So it's not any cost to the county whatsoever. So this is one thing that, again, ties into the overdose issue that we're dealing with. And it really solidified our warm handoff protocol, which we have to have through the D A P requirements. So are any questions about the mobile assessment, mobile assessment piece? Okay, I'm gonna move right along here, the Certified Recovery, this is another reinvestment project. And basically what this is, is the hierarchy is therapist counselor, then it's case manager, then it's recovery specialists in the treatment arena. So what happens is someone goes to an outpatient clinic and they see a counselor or therapist, they get the treatment they need, they get the counseling they need. The case management, like the the outpatient clinics, they don't have the case management piece. Recovery support specialists are people that can help these people that are in counseling, they don't do counseling, they're not therapists, but they help these people navigate the system. They help them get resources that they need to get, they help them get the meetings that they should go to. They might help them navigate a lot of things that we showed on that presentation today. So recovery support specialists are important people, the only agency in Lebanon County that has recovery support specialists that we deal with is R A I S. And we contract with R A I S for buprenorphine, they have recovery support specialists. The lady they have in Lebanon County had probably thirty to thirty five people that she helps got through the system. So sitting back where I was at, we're thinking, we need more of these recovery support specialists to help these people navigate the system. So through C A V H C reinvestment, we were able to apply for money to get a recovery support specialist and embed that recovery support specialist into a clinic in Lebanon County, which we did with P C S. So P C S now has our first recovery support specialist outside of R A I S and the buprenorphine program, they had the first one. In my eyes, it's a pilot to future, like, I'd like to have a recovery support specialist at White Deer Run outpatient, T W Penessa outpatient, I'd like to have it across the board. But again, we could apply for one person, which we did. This program started, but we got the approval back in August of two thousand eighteen, September was a month where they hired people. October was actually the kickoff where they started seeing people. They only saw one person in October. And then in November, it went up to thirteen people were involved with them. And then in December, it went up to twenty three people. So in three short months, you can see how the numbers are going up. That's twenty three people that not only have a therapist and a counselor, but they also have a recovery support specialist to maybe help them get to and from a place. Maybe help them with the job application, maybe help them, all the social needs that they have, other than the counseling piece of it. So that frees up the counselor to do counseling and therapy and they don't have to worry about all the other issues and things that are going on in their life. That's where the recovery support specialist comes in. And again, it's our, it's our hope that we can embed one of those folks in every clinic in Lebanon County.
Jim, is there, uh, do you have any ideas or an overlap between the folks that you're working with and the folks that are in day reporting center or that?
Well, I'm gonna get, I'm, can I get to that?
Yeah, okay.
I I have, I had a meeting with Judge Tillwalk and Commissioner Ames about the day reports.
Mr. Phillips.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's it. I didn't say Paul.
You said Ames.
I was looking at you, that's why I said you. I had a meeting with.
You don't have to, you don't have to justify it to me, I get called Bob all the time.
Commissioner Phillips and me and Judge Tillwalk had a meeting about connecting some folks to the day report, so I will touch on that if that's all right. Uh, the other thing, another reinvestment project that we have, again with P C S, and I just want to let you folks know, you're gonna hear P C S a lot. And all these projects that I'm gonna talk about, they are, they, we are contracting with them to run, okay? Uh, I just want to let everyone know that all these, all these projects were offered to all the outpatient clinics or people that could provide this service. And they all had to do proposals and a committee, selection committee had to decide who got those projects. I just want to let you know that I don't sit on the selection committee, uh, that's my other S C A director from other counties. So it's not a bias that P C S is getting all the projects, projects and no one else is. And I say that only because I worked for them for twelve years and I don't want it to appear that way, so that's fair. Anyway, the the project that I was talking about, the Recovery Center, if you're familiar with the Recovery Center, it's at seven oh one Chestnut, it's the old P C S outpatient clinic. Since, this is a report from last year, from July two thousand seventeen, July two eighteen, there were seven hundred and forty six individuals signed in and used the center either by name or alias. Uh, the most popular service at the Recovery Center remains to be A A and N A meetings. Other things that occur at the center for assistance for these folks is job search, housing, access to treatment and meeting list. That's a lot of people through that, through that building, again, that's on the bottom part of seven oh one Chestnut, it's a recovery center. I know they do football Sundays there, they do movie night there, they do a lot of other fun things, they do cookouts in the back. It's for a place where the recovery community can go, a safe place to meet and have meetings and P C S, again, they have staff that supervises Recovery Center. And so far, so good, things are going well, those numbers are up since last year, so more people are using the facility. The other part of that was the Recovery House project, which took a while to get up, uh, get up and going. They are up and running now, they have a facility above the Recovery Center, a housing type apartment set up. It's designed for six females and they currently have four females in the program, they have two beds available. This is important because we have people going to rehab and this is a place where people can come back and maybe live in a nice environment where it's safe and people are in recovery and it's a clean and sober living situation.
What is the maximum amount of time they're allowed to stay?
Maximum of the time, uh, usually three months, three months.
Three months?
Yes. Now, I'm sure there's consideration for people to stay as long as they need to stay, whatever is appropriate. Part of this project is, C A V H C also has a scholarship program for recovery houses and this program is involved in that scholarship program. So when folks go in there, they get the first month's rent paid, they get half their second month's rent paid, then they're on their own in the third month. By then, they have a job, hopefully, they can support themselves and pay their own rent. So that's the design of that, so three months is usually when they're on their own. Some may elect to stay there if if appropriate according to P C S or some may elect to leave and move out. Any question about the Recovery Center Recovery House projects? And then the last reinvestment project I'm going to talk about is, uh, back in two thousand fourteen, this was the first reinvestment project that I was involved with. But it had to do with adolescent outpatient counseling. When I first got in my position, we had to send kids, if they wanted outpatient counseling, to Steelton, to Mizetti and Sullivan. We had no provider in county that would deal with adolescents. So we got, you know, we applied for this reinvestment project and we were awarded it, P C S has run it since two thousand fourteen. Again, in two thousand fourteen, there was all kinds of startup monies given to P C S to start this up. Proud to say, happy to say that this program still exists and P C S, again, has sustained it all these years since two thousand fourteen. Over those years, they've seen seventy one adolescents, which. Basically, those people have come from probation, juvenile probation parole, maybe, they've come from children, youth, they come from the school districts, maybe the S A teams that refer these kids to counseling. But seventy one people were, you know, it's probably about four months, four years, five years, it's a decent amount of adolescents whose parents don't have to drive them to Steelton for them to get services. The good part about the contingency management program is they deal with the family as well. Adolescent cannot be involved in this program unless the family agrees to also participate. A lot of programs don't deal with the adolescent and the family's left out of it. In this program, it has to be a commitment by the family and the child. And the outcomes seem to be better than when it's just a child involved, because we all know it's not just the child. It it's the whole system, the whole family that needs to maybe make changes and they need to understand the adolescent, the adolescent needs to understand the parents. So it's a family approach to treatment for the adolescent. So that's still going. Those are the reinvestment projects that have been up and running through reinvestment money, again, it's money, money that doesn't come anywhere other than C A V H C. Sad to say, this year, we're running out of deficit, so we won't have any opportunity for reinvestment projects. Which seems like every year since I've been there, we've had something coming down and we've been able to apply for something and get something for Lebanon County, but this year it's not gonna happen because we're in a deficit. Okay, we're going prison, prison projects. Uh, one of the things I've decided and talked about is the prison is like a, not a pet project of our office, but it's a area where we want to. Focus and put more attention on it. The prison, we know that there's, depending on what statistics you believe, eighty to eighty five people in the prison have drug and alcohol problems. So that's a high, and we know that it runs out.
Percentage, percentage.
A high percentage, yeah, I'm sorry.
You said eighty.
Yeah, eighty to eighty five percent of people in prison have some form of drug or alcohol problem. And we know that there's anywhere about five hundred inmates a month. So that's a huge population that I think is underserved from my standpoint for drug and alcohol. So what we've done, we've been doing this for the past five years, we have the M A, the M A jail program that I think you're aware of. Uh, the case manager that goes down to prison, he goes down to prison on behalf of probation parole, they have someone they put in jail, they want to get them out and send them to treatment. So Brandon from my office goes down there, in the past five years, he's gone down there and seen two hundred and forty inmates. And out of the two hundred and forty inmates, he has gotten a hundred and fifty one out to go to inpatient treatment and he's gotten eighty two out to go to outpatient treatment. So out of the two hundred and forty people that Brandon's seen over the last five years, two hundred and thirty three of them got out of prison to go to treatment. The other part or the other piece of that is it helps with overcrowding, those people that are on probation parole. Those people that are on probation parole aren't sitting there doing their probation parole bit. They're actually getting out to do treatment, more productive time spent. So we continue to do that. I mean, you look at that, that's 96 percent of those people that we saw got somewhere, rather than just sitting in the prison. So we continue to do that, Brandon continues to be busy with that. The other thing that stopped for a little bit because we had issues with the provider, we had prizzy groups in the prison for male and female. Those started back up and those are going well, so. And they're educational groups. So we have education groups for the females and we have education groups for the males, drug and alcohol related. So we're doing that as well. The other thing we're doing is we, I'm in contact with Warden Carnes. And Warden Carnes and myself are trying to work on, the DOC is going to release monies for counties to provide vivitrol at the county prisons behind the walls before the inmate leaves. So what we're trying to do is when the DOC lets the grant, when it releases the grant, me along with the war, we're gonna apply for the grant. And the idea is that we're gonna identify people that are in the prison that are ready for release. We're gonna identify who has drug and alcohol problems. And those folks that have drug and alcohol problems, we're going to educate and we're going to identify. It's gonna have to be some changes with medical staff and what have you, what they do. But the idea is to give someone a shot before they leave the prison, the vitrol shot. Five days before they leave the prison. That will keep that person 30 days from having urges or going and doing drugs and getting high and all that stuff. So you can add something?
It was briefly mentioned this morning at Prison Board, and I understand there's more to come on that in February. You're gonna be a guest at Prison Board and talk-
Yeah, we're gonna talk about that.
More length with the Prison Board about-
Somebody gets a shot, they leave the prison. Once they leave the prison, the work's not done, it's just really begun. Because then they get, you know, we hook them up with the recovery support specialists, maybe through RACE, and then we have to work on them getting their second shot. So really what you're doing is you're buying time, about 30 days when someone gets out of prison, to get them stable, to get them where they need to go.
Because often they will leave and one of the first things they might do is relapse.
There are, there are folks that leave and they immediately go back to using what they used before they went to jail. Not realizing I've, I've been in jail for three months. My tolerance for what I was using is not there. But they go right back out. If I was using 10 bags of heroin before I went to jail, I'm using 10 when I get out. And when you use 10 when you get out, that's when we lose people. And we've had, we've had a number of people that got out of prison and overdosed and died within a week or two of being out of prison. So we're trying to avoid that. We're trying to, and it's all about reentry, it's all about helping the inmate when they get out to, you know, give you 30 days to get on your feet, you know, and that medication works. And again, they won't be worried about going and getting drugs. They'll be worried about maybe where you're gonna live, a job, and taking care of those things. And we'll worry about getting you in treatment and, you know, getting you hooked up with the services that you need.
Many of those things are, I would assume are pressures that lead people to use because this is just overwhelming, you know, get out of prison.
Get out of prison, you know, you walk out and you gotta figure it out. And you don't have a lot of time to figure it out. You gotta live, you need a place to live, you need, you know, food, shelter, all the necessities. So we're gonna try to eliminate some of the stress of the drug addiction. And I, I believe I am gonna meet, I think I'm gonna be in February's meeting with him, Warden Carnes.
Yeah, you mentioned that.
The other thing with the prison, we just had this approved. And this is, this is a prevention program through Compass Mark. It's called the Family Services Advocate Program. And what this is, is we know, again, 500 people or so are their own average daily population. A lot of people go to prison, and when they go to prison, they leave their families behind. And we are dealing with, you know, we're getting people out of jail, we're dealing with them. We're educating those folks in jail, we're dealing with them. We're trying to get vivitrol shots for them, we're dealing with them. What about the family? So we had an opportunity to apply for this grant with Compass Mark, which we did. The Family Services Advocate Program. The Family Services Advocate Program works to identify, support, and advocate for unique needs and rights of children with incarcerated parents. So while these parents go to prison, maybe it's a single mom. We're going to provide them, Compass Mark as a prevention provider, they're gonna provide them with case management and help to navigate resources and get help that they may need on the outside. Because we also know when people go to prison and they lose their insurance, so does the family. So there's a lot of, a lot of issues at home that, you know, so we're gonna start dealing with the families of these folks that end up in prison with drug and alcohol related issues. That also was, and that was approved, that is not pending, that is approved. Again, it's a startup, so we're gonna walk before we run. I think the total amount of the grant is only for $14,000. So I don't know how far that'll go or how many families we'll reach. But if it's successful, then we'll talk about investing more money in something like that. Any questions about that? Now, maybe this would be a good time, the DRC. I talked about getting like 240 people out of prison in the last five years. Be honest with you, a lot of the people that we get out aren't successful. A lot of people we get out, no sooner do we know they're back in jail, no sooner do we know probation, you know, they're testing hot for drug use and what have you. When they get out of rehab, they don't go to their aftercare appointments. So there's a lot of follow-up with these folks that, you know, isn't happening. Okay? So there's two ways that I thought we could address it, I'll talk about both ways. One has to do with the DRC. I talked to Commissioner Phillips and I said, for the life of me, I can't believe that these 240 people can't be referred to the Day Reporting Center when they get out of rehab. That, to me, would be the logical thing. We don't have halfway houses here, so they can't go to halfway houses. We only have two recovery houses for males and we have one recovery house for females. So those, those resources for people getting out of treatment, rehab, to come back and live in Lebanon County are, it's not a lot of resources. That's one thing we have to try to deal with and improve. But while we're doing that, you know, these folks, last year, we saw 535 people. 265 people were from the probation parole side of things. 112 of those were inmates that we got out on the jail program. That 112 people, we interviewed, you go to rehab, and then, you know, you go back to jail or they do whatever. So we're losing those people when they get back. So we talked to Judge Tillwalk, and Judge Tillwalk's gonna talk to Sally Barry, and they're gonna talk about, these people, when we interview them, they need to be released by probation. Court order, release. It's our understanding that we're gonna release you, we're gonna court order that you be released and that you enter into rehab and you complete the rehab. That's what the court order states. So we got to talk and then, you know, we can put on that court order whatever we want. Upon your discharge from rehab, you will go to the Day Reporting Center. You will receive an assessment. If the assessment's appropriate, you're appropriate for the program, you'll participate in that program. So it's an additional one thing we had to add to the court order for it to be legal for these folks to be enrolled into the Day Reporting Center. So that's our hope. But that's not finalized, that's a discussion between Judge Tillwalk and Sally Barry. But it seemed like the judge was definitely for that happening. The other, the other important part of that is, all the referrals we get from probation, they have a mental health probation officer. And all the referrals from that probation officer to go down to the prison and interview his people, every one of his people we got out went back to jail. Now, they have mental health and drug and alcohol. That client, that client list or that clientele would absolutely benefit from the Day Reporting Center. Because that's, in my understanding, that's to keep them out of jail and to address all their needs. All their needs can be addressed at the Day Reporting Center. Mental health, drug and alcohol, education, employment.
Counseling, family counseling.
So it just seems like, you know, the Day Reporting Center was, you know, thought of and brought up and established to keep people out of jail. We're getting people out of jail and there's certain people are going back to jail. So there has to be a, there has to be something to be told with that. And so we talked about the Day Reporting Center. The other thing, the last thing I really have, the other thing I talked about, all the things my case managers do, my case managers are very busy. At one point, I talked to Commissioner Phillips about adding staff to our department. And, you know, again, if you can justify it and you can show numbers and a reason for it, you know, by all means, you can do that. You know, you can propose that, whether it's accepted or not. But in the meantime, I got a notification from DDA. They did a FIA proposal and they are gonna give money to counties for case management.
Was that, was that accurate?
FIA, it just, I can't think of it right now. But it's basically, they're gonna, we're gonna do a proposal to them, telling them how we would do case management and they would fund the project. Fiscal initiative, I don't, I can't think of it right now, Jim. So the, the FIA proposal, basically we had to write up a proposal. DDA wants everybody who has drug and alcohol services to have the ability, if they want to, to have case management. So it's gonna be a county-wide thing, all the providers, all the people that want case management. We have to put that in place. Now, we can't hire, PCS has proposals for seven case managers. Four recovery support specialists. The proposal was for like $349,000. We couldn't do that in our office, a lot of reasons, you know, our space, staffing. I mean, it would cost the county a lot more money to do that than it would to do it with PCS. So PCS wrote the proposal. The proposal, we're supposed to hear back by the 18th, which is Friday. So I'll know soon enough if we got accepted or approved. And if we get approved, PCS will have a case management department. Everybody in the county, no matter what provider you go to, can access case management services. And again, it would help our staff because they would do all of the outpatient stuff. They would cover all that, things that my guys are covering now, the two of them, plus additional, all the other specialty projects that we've got going on, so. If that makes sense. I, FIA, I'm still trying to think of what it means.
All right.
But anyway, Veterans Court, I'm sure you're aware Veterans Court started in the county January of this year. And we have a case manager, Brandon, who's involved with that Veterans Court, just like we have. Matt is involved in DUI Court as well, so. So we stay busy, a lot of new things coming our way. Trying to do a lot of new things, but it takes time.
Okay. Any other questions, Commissioner? Thank you, Jim, that's very revealing, brings us up to date. We're not as in tune with it, I guess it's Commissioner Phillips is, so.
Well, I meet with him for executive meeting before my advisory board meeting. So he hears all, he hears it on a monthly basis. So he just thought it would be a good idea that you folks were here as well.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.